Before we start our presentation, just wanted to let everyone know, we've posted a handout on the forum. We just didn't want to print it out as it's a sustainability presentation, so there's an electronic copy for you.
Hi and welcome. We're Baker Consultancy, working with Auckland Council on their journey of sustainability and shared vision of becoming the most livable city. During this presentation, we will look at some of the lessons learnt by two international organisations during their own journey to sustainability. Furthermore, we will consider how these might be applied to Auckland Council. Our team is very pleased to meet you all. Please let me introduce them to you. I'm Michelle. This is Alex, Napua, Maria, Shivani and Aminjo. We'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the contribution of our colleague Kame, who regrettably is unable to be with us today.
Okay, I'm going to introduce something about Interface. Interface was founded by Ray Anderson in 1973 after being questioned by a customer about what Interface is doing for the environment. Anderson realised that the company was not focusing on the environment at all. He made his mission to change the way company work. In 1993, Mission Zero was introduced to the company with the goal to reduce the company's carbon footprint and become a sustainable organisation. They are aiming towards the goal using 100% renewable resources by 2020. In order to achieve this goal, the company introduces new business models, the Seventh Path to Sustainability. This includes avoiding waste... Sorry. ...kind of waste, eliminating the use of toxic substances, substituting non-renewable resources with renewable resources, closed-loop recycling, use of efficient transportation to eliminate waste and emission, analysing their impact on natural ecosystem and focusing on the delivery of values rather than just materials. Throughout this process, Interface has reduced greenhouse gas emissions per unit of product by 71% from 1996 to 2013. They have reduced the usage of fossil fuels, wasteage and water. The reduced of 90% of wasteage to landfill from carpet factories was seen from 1996 to 2013.
Our international company of choose was Melbourne City. A little bit of history is that it was founded in 1835 by Tasmanian settlers. But it was until 1842 that it was incorporated as a town and elected a town council. The bomb initiated in the discovery of gold on the Victoria region in the 1851. I'm sorry. It became the... It has become the second largest city in Australia. The population rounds over 4 million people. The median age is 36 years old and the ruling organisation is Melbourne City Council, which has established eight goals for the welfare of their population. The first goal is to become a city for people. It is their aim to keep the municipality a great place to live, work and visit. They are aiming to be a creative city by promoting a diverse mix of artists so that art is accessible to all. They are looking forward to be economically prosperous by helping small and medium enterprises, local, nation and globally wild. They are also looking forward to become a knowledge city by improving their innovation, research, business and information technology to attract international students. They are also becoming an eco-city and that's our point of interest. So I'll talk in detail on the next slide. They want to become a connected city by... I'm sorry. By promoting safe, efficient and sustainable movement through the city without sacrificing social or ecological values. Their number... Their goal number seven is lead by example. Due to their work, Melbourne City is now become a leader on their council organisation. So they are aiming to maintain their reputation. Their eighth and final goal is to manage our resources well. They attract and retain a highly skilled workforce and shift to achieve efficiencies while maintaining high standards of service. About the fifth goal. The fifth goal is in display and in detail and it can be said that they are looking to improve the sustainability of the city building stock, water management and recycling within the municipality, reduce the carbon emissions and protect our world. They reduce the ecological footprint by two main programmes: Zero Net Emissions by 2020 and Total Water Mark City as a catchment. They are looking into innovative commercial solutions, efficient water usage, sustainable communities, climate change response and as a result, their emissions have been reduced on average 25 for the last past three years.
I'm going to talk about the zero net emission, which was created on 2002. So the zero net emission by 2020 is a strategy that uses sustainable resources and measures to increase the climate change protection. The three strategies that goes under the Act is to develop a market for green building. Developing a green market would increase the consumer demand of it and it will help reduce energy usage in the city residential and commercial areas by 50%. Strategy two is to increase demand for renewable energy and energy efficient power. Reduce non-renewable energy by 50% and increase demand by 45%. Strategy three looks at encouraging Victoria City to take part in the Zero Net Emissions Act and reduce 50% of the corporate emissions. Integrating the Zero Net Emissions Strategy. The first step is to allow stakeholders to take ownership of their actions and create awareness amongst the industries. Act two is awareness of the carbon trading market and regulations. And Act three is developing a centre of greenhouse enterprise that connects the district public and public sources. The cost of the total net emission is $1.75 million, which includes plantations that's going to be developed in five years. Total cost of $576,000 and the centre of greenhouse for two years for $500,000. The framework for the zero net emission identifies financial benefits in business processes and stakeholders. It analyses the economic and environmental and social outcomes that can impact the zero net emission framework.
Finding similar concepts to Auckland Council will have many advantages to the organisation. These advantages will benefit the planet, people and profit. The company's ethical behaviour will be improved by practising green initiatives. By reducing greenhouse gas emissions, waste and water usage, the company is doing the right thing for the organisation and the environment. Environmental issues have been a focus all around the world and people want to know what they can do to help. By introducing green initiatives, Auckland Council can get engagement from stakeholders in the community. The council can raise awareness and get the community involved and help reduce harm to the environment. Another area the council will benefit from is productivity and profit. Creating new products and procedures gives them a chance to make it better and increase productivity. In the long run, cost savings will result in revenue growth. There are always disadvantages when changing the way an organisation is run. Cost of implementation is one that immediately comes to mind. The upfront costs of becoming a sustainable company are expected to be large as there is a lot of change that will be done. It is hopeful that these implementation costs will be recovered in future savings. Another disadvantage is an increase in product cost. It is likely products and processes will be more expensive when made using sustainable materials. This may make customers unhappy, but it is important to make customers aware of this as they will likely appreciate the effort the company has made to become more sustainable. Although not all stakeholders may support the company's determination to become a sustainable organisation and this lack of support is another disadvantage Auckland Council may face.
Integrating sustainability into any organisation requires leadership and employee engagement. By fostering a mindset of collaboration and cooperation, prevalence towards silo mentality within the organisation is reduced or eradicated. To facilitate alignment of goals and to create a positive culture, clear strategic guidance and leadership from the top down is needed and must illuminate the way forward without ambiguity. We all know that business must have profits to exist. However, the purpose of business is often something else. Often a mismatch exists between business and business purpose. This creates misunderstanding which ultimately drives business and stakeholders in different directions. Balancing the mismatch between business and purpose creates value. Moreover, it provides opportunity to create something together. Overcoming stakeholder indifference therefore requires the creation of a living conversation. In other words, an interaction and information sharing between people. It takes time and knowledge to develop in-house expertise, but the win-win from informed and engaged stakeholders is buy-in and committed action. Creating a city where everything is endlessly recycled as your new products is a long way off from becoming a reality. To date, council has introduced some robust operations for managing waste through reduction, recycling and reuse. However, further opportunity exists. Fresh approaches are needed to overcome barriers to doing more. Encouraging the supply chain to design closed-loop supply systems will create value and a win-win for both the council and suppliers as a burden on resources is reduced and lean thinking is introduced. Additionally, such changes will build value and cost savings throughout the supplier-customer base. The intention of the Resources Management Act is to promote the sustainable management of natural and physical resources. However, it is not without its critics. Whilst the Act is intended to benefit New Zealand as a whole, it is the council who plan how the legislation is applied. As a result, they often bear the public wrath of criticism and experience greater scrutiny from stakeholders who are negotiating their way through overly complicated compliance issues. Additionally, the cost of regulatory compliance can be expensive and often requires specialist management and diplomacy. The importance of evaluating the payoffs or the economic impact of sustainability should not be underestimated. Determining the factors to be measured and how evaluation will be implemented can be challenging. Measurement of sustainability initiatives is essential for any organisation to understand whether its strategies are effective and producing the desired outcomes. Throughout all of these challenges, it must be remembered that sustainability is not exclusive to other functions. Long-term profitability and growth strategies should integrate sustainability planning. Maximising profit while reducing costs will facilitate sustainability in the future. Although it is inevitable that trade-offs will be necessary along the way. The best plans will fail if business does not remain profitable. To move on to our findings and recommendations, Auckland Council must be applauded for the work they have done thus far. However, there is still a long way to go. We would like to mention lessons learnt by Interface and Melbourne City that can be applied to Auckland Council. Building stakeholder relationships must become an integral focus within the journey. Doing the most good for the greatest number of people means weighing pros and cons and finding win-win outcomes. If council are to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people, then a consistent and transparent message is needed. Community groups have a voice and a strong influence is in any society. If feelings of worry, disadvantage or resistance are to be overcome, clear leadership, purpose and empathy must become attributes the council are recognised for. It is recommended that council develop and promote strategies that align with local business and reward commitment toward closed-loop supply systems. There will be a cost to facilitate such a strategy. However, the payoff in building stronger, more informed and collaborative relationships is a fundamental mindset change. Sustainability will become a natural characteristic of our society and the roadmap to becoming the most livable city. Introducing sustainability targets to every strategy and establishing how performance will be measured is another key element. Publicise this information and celebrate the wins. Invite public submission on areas that are not achieving targets. Solutions surprisingly may come from the least expected places. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, if you have questions, wait, please.
Wait, 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 wait. I've got a question. Right. So, in the recent election, as you know, the Green Party overall got about 10%, I think, of the party vote. They were expecting more. Across the country, the... Of all the cities, Auckland was... Had the lowest green vote across all the big cities. Wellington, Christchurch, Dunedin. To me, my instant reaction was this is a potential barrier, another barrier to the implementation of your recommendations. Have you got any comment on that? For example, why do you think that might be so? That there's such a low vote for Green in Auckland?
I'm sorry, I'm not an Aucklander, but I think being sustainable shouldn't be about a party. It should be a culture and it should be part of everyone, regardless of their vote. And I hope it's not a barrier for the development of green buildings and sustainable commerce... Enterprises. And I think it can be overcome by talking to people into doing it more than trying to push them into them.
The inner-city suburbs actually did like... Some Green Party had the same votes as Labor for like Remuera and Mount Eden. So is it just that it's not a focus to other parts of Auckland?
Very, very over in Auckland.
Yeah, but in the city suburbs, it was really noticeable that they had the same amount of votes as Labor in one of the areas.
Yeah, I'm interested to delve.
One of the thoughts that I have on that is that those inner-city suburbs have always been very close to Auckland City. Since the whole Unitary Plan came into effect, it's introduced outlying suburbs, if you like, that have previous to this had their own independence or felt like they had their own independence. So I think in some respects there is a lack of buy-in and a little bit of resistance to the Unitary Plan as a whole.
I have a question.
As you said, business is for profit. But do you think the people that are living in the residence from last, say, 20 years in a house, they will leave their house if they have feelings towards their house? They will adapt to eco-friendly to leave their house because they spent their childhood over there? Their family festivals they celebrated over? Like an emotional person will leave their house to develop a new house for eco-friendly?
Yes, sure.
They don't necessarily have to like move and get a new house or whatever, but they could do things to update their house to make it more sustainable or like do more recycling and less trash and just things like that, rather than... They don't have to start their lives over necessarily, but just do what they can to help.
But if the council group asks to re-establish your house, like you were saying, the council should make some rules? If I say to make it eco-friendly, not to push them?
We're not suggesting that people move from their houses or redevelop the home that they live in necessarily. What we are saying is be aware of your environment, follow the directives from the council that are based on the voice of people. If you want to...
The council's...
Yes, the council is representative of the residents of Auckland City. So to have a voice, you need to speak to council and there are numerous opportunities and mechanisms where the general public can voice their concerns or even make suggestions to Auckland Council. All of those suggestions and recommendations are presented through the organisation in the right format and responded to. Thank you, Grand Grand.
Some of the business area, just like Dominion Road, behind the Dominion Road shops, there is so much rubbish behind those shops. So why the recycling is not happening there? What council is doing about these shops? And some business areas very dirty, very unclean. No, if you go there, you can see there is no recycling is happening at all. So what the council is doing for those areas?
Thank you, Asma. That's quite a specific question and we're not actually privy to the answer to that. But I would suggest that that's part of the council's health and safety mechanisms and the buy-in that they're trying to get from businesses in terms of their... Or building owners, in terms of their building warrants, fitness and their rubbish collection systems and actually having to buy-in to actually get the appropriate food grade passes, you know, to operate a business. And like anybody, as children, you learn by example and as adults, we can also learn by example.
Okay, so you mentioned in your disadvantages that it could be a lack of support for the Auckland Council. What would you recommend they could do to counteract that lack of support?
What I personally would recommend is establish a programme about informing the people of what is going to be done, how and why, so people are aware of their impact, how can they change it and why should they change it? Because sometimes motivation is what doesn't let any change to come. So that's what I would propose, like talks and activities that make the initiative closer to common people. I'm sorry, we have some questions for you in case you're getting attention. So you asked us, we asked you. Okay, if you answer the question right, the whole team gets a chocolate. So, question number one. Name two of the seven paths to sustainability. Interface.
Eco and economy.
Two?
Eco, based on economy, that means. You said fifth point was yours, economy?
That was the Melbourne one. We're talking about Interface.
Interface. Interface, seven...
Okay. Is it Team A?
Yes.
Okay, how many are you? Question two. How many goals does the Melbourne City Council have?
Eight.
Can I throw them?
No.
Or hand them? I'll hand them. And the third question is, name one advantage and one disadvantage of City Auckland City. Auckland City Council, sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I like how they were using bullet points, like for majority of all their slides, which is good. And how everyone was speaking out loud. It was really clear and was very interesting.
Yeah.
Do I get a lolly for that?
Overall, the way you guys presented was creative and was relevant to the topic. Auckland Council, yeah, it's good.
Well done, guys. That was a great presentation.
Well done, guys. It's Claire speaking and I can actually really know what you're talking about and this day. And it's good.
You guys did really good. It was really clear and really organised and structured and the flow was really nice. I could understand right the way through exactly what you were trying to get across. Yes.
Yeah, I thought you all spoke very clearly and succinctly. So well done.
Yep, and excellent team introduction and thanks for putting that handout on Lidl to practise what you preach in terms of being sustainable. Okay, areas for improvement? Start with you.
The only area I can think is, again, like the last thing, you don't all need to be standing up front. You can seat and just come up as needed. But otherwise, it was great.
Really good. Maybe a couple of you were quiet too, but otherwise, yeah, really, really well done.
Yeah, and maybe you can use, no, more body language.
Some of the points were a little bit lengthy, but overall it was good.
Everyone was prepared for the presentation. I can see formally dressed. Yeah, and reading from the notes was seen within some group members, yeah.
It was a great presentation. I didn't see it anywhere. You guys did all your best, so.
Any more positives from anyone? Yeah, just only one point for me. Just give an overview of the presentation. Tell us what you're going to tell us about and then launch it. Tell us what you're going to tell us, tell us and then tell us what you've told us. Okay. It was one, it's more of a question than a area of improvement. You put up quite a complex graph about the, I think, the energy reduction targets for that one. Yeah. Naturally, I was really trying to withstand this diagram and I needed another half an hour for it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, don't bother now, don't bother now. Yeah, yeah, it was interesting. But a lot, a lot of information, yeah. Oh, no. My question was... Sorry, the question was, in Interface slide, what was the reason for the astonishing reduction from 2012 to 2013 of... Shh, shh, quieten the cheap seats. That one. What is that amazing drop from 1.6 to 0.8? Pounds of CO2 per something, per yard of stuff. What accounts for that massive drop there? Do you know? No? Tell us next week. It's, we've done all our judging. But I mean, I mean, something exceptional has happened there. It's pounds of CO2 per square yard and it's dropped 50%. Yeah. Okay. So they've adopted some amazing new technology or there's a major mistake in their calculations. All right. So good introduction, handout. Graphics, images and photos. Just a beautiful mix and integration of your images and photos into the presentation. You had some good kind of what I call look-forward moments. You'd say, I'm going to explain, I think Marie did this, I'm going to explain this later on. And then, and you did. So that signposting or look-forward was, was good. Some nice automation in the power... Some nice automation in the PowerPoints as well. I know this all takes a lot of time to get right and of course, that the final question's at the end, that raises your engagement score and just helps us all realise what we should have learnt. Okay, any other positive points from anybody? Nope, nope, all right.